Okay, we will call the February fifteenth and twenty-two meeting of the Altadena Town Council Order. The time is at oh two P M. I got my little handy thing. Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. I hope everyone enjoyed Chinese New Year's and Valentine's Day. And maybe have plans for Monday, President's Day. I want to ask everyone to please be respectful of the time limits given. Want to get out of here on time and in efficient timely manner. And thank you for being here. Okay, item number one, flag salute. We have Dr. Mu G. Gay Cooper to lead us in the flag salute. He, um, Dr. Cooper is dedicated to sharing her joy of science with children adult and adults around the world. She is deeply involved in various science outreach initiatives, mostly with K through twelve students. She offers her knowledge through shows like Because Space, How the Universe Works, and Bill Nye Saves the World. Dr. Mu G. Cooper received her B. A. in Physics from Hampton University in two thousand and six. She then enrolled in Dexter, Dexter University where she received her and P. H. D. in Mechanical Engineering with some concentrate thermal fluid sciences. Her dissertation studies involve non-equilibrium plasma sterilization of spacecraft materials. Dr. Cooper currently works at J. P. L. in the Planetary Protection Group. She is going to lead us in our flag salute.
Thank you so much, Veronica. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Okay, hey, can we have roll call by Dorothy Wong, our secretary?
You, yes, roll call, Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Amy Lyford.
Present.
Billy Malone. No Billy, uh, Nick Arndson.
Present.
I am here, Dorothy Wong. Hannah Petrie.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Sandra E. Thomas.
Present.
Thank you, Chris O'Malley. Thank you, Veronica Jones.
Here.
Thank you, Darryl Aranda.
Hello.
Thank you, Madeline Barber.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madeline. Alan Peck.
Here.
Thank you. Reginald Wilkins.
Hello.
Hello. Thank you, Doug Cauliflower.
Here.
Thank you, Sylvia Vega.
Here.
Thank you, Diane Markison.
Here.
Thank you, that's fifteen out of sixteen. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Dorothy. Okay, one point three approval of the February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. And Victoria, Vice Chair.
Good evening, fellow council members and Altadena community. The Altadena Town Council Executive Committee met on Tuesday, February eighth, to set the agenda for tonight's meeting. And you all received that agenda on Friday. Um, I received no changes to the agenda. So before motioning, are there any changes to note from anyone? Seeing none, I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
On second.
Motion carried. Okay, we're moving along here, uh, to item, um, two officers report.
Veronica, I think, I think technically we need to vote. Right. The motion carried, but then we need to vote.
Okay, motion carries. Can we have a, but all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, motion carries. I'm gonna get it right one time, don't worry.
You will.
You got a year to do that. Exactly.
Hey, now we move on to the officers' report. Okay, and, um, two point one is the chairman's report. That's my report. And I want to ask, um, council members to mark their calendars for a retreat on March thirteenth. That's the first thing. You, details will follow. Check your emails. Don't delete it when you see my name. Um, my report tonight will focus History Month, which is this month, the month of February. In recognition, celebration of Black History Month, with the help of Dr. Cooper, we will see and hear history being made in our own back. Dr. Cooper, can you give us a very short description of what we're about to see? You're muted.
You'd think I'd figure that out by now. Um, the Jet Propulsion Laboratories Employee Resource Group, BEST, which stands for the Black Excellence Strategic Team, collaborated to perform Lift Every Voice and Sing, a hymn written by James Weldon Johnson in eighteen ninety-nine. The song resonated in the South during the Civil Rights Movement and is considered the Black National Anthem. We hold the same hope strong today and beyond. And now I will transition to the video. Share my screen.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cooper. Thank you for that. I just want us all to remember that Black History is all our history. It's our history. And in Altadena, we're making history every day. So thank you. Okay, moving on, on the agenda, we have our Vice Chair report. Victoria Knapp.
Thank you, Chair Jones and Dr. Cooper. Good evening again, everyone. I wanted to let the Altadena community know that Pasadena Unified School District assembled a redistricting commission, which included members from Pasadena, Altadena, and Sierra Madre. Redistricting occurs every ten years using the updated census data. And in this case, was looking at the school board trustee districts. The commission's mandate is to balance the population among the seven trustee districts to within no more than a ten percent variance between the highest and lowest populated districts. The commission has been meeting since the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-one. And last week presented their recommended amended map to the school board. The recommendation of the commission represented the least amount of change to Altadena. The school board will vote on the map at their regular meeting on February twenty-fourth. I wanted to take a moment to thank Altadena's, uh, Nora Small, who herself is a fourth generation Altidinan, graduate of P. U. S. D. schools and mom to two P. U. S. D. graduates, and Brett Nicely, whose two children are currently enrolled in P. U. S. D. schools, for giving their time and talents to the commission and for representing Altadena.
Okay, that concludes your report.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, two point three, recording secretary, Arzyn.
Hello, everybody. Last month's minutes were sent out for review three weeks ago. A few adjustments were made and the minutes were sent again last week for final review. No new changes were requested. Are there any changes tonight? Great, I see nothing. With no additional requests for alterations, I move that we accept the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Altadena Town Council minutes into record.
Second. Here, I'll second. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. Thank you, Nick, for doing such a good job on the minutes, too. I appreciate it. Thank you. And I hope, um, we do take the time to read them. It's important. Thank you. Okay, um.
Chair, Chair Jones, it's, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, uh, council member Malone was having trouble getting in. I did just admit him, so we should be good to go.
Okay, good, yeah, he texted me. That's good. Thank you, Victoria. Okay, so we're gonna move on to our big report, that Treasury Report, two point four, All That Money.
All that money.
Show me the money.
So just for the record, I wanted to, uh, I messed it up, uh, last week in my, not last week, last month in my exuberance, I didn't do it quite right. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna revise that. So last month, uh, we started out our balance at seventeen hundred and forty dollars and two cents. We had, um, four hundred and twenty dollars worth of deposits from the election. We had two hundred and forty-nine eighty-seven worth of withdrawals, both of which were from Go Daddy, one in the amount of two thirty-nine eighty-eight, uh, and then one in the amount of nine ninety-nine. I assume that's some sort of annual fee and then their normal monthly fee. And we ended out, um, last month's statement at one thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and fifteen cents. Uh, this month, Go Daddy has raised their price from nine ninety-nine to twelve ninety-nine. So we started out these, um, we started out the statement at nineteen, ten, and fifteen cents. And we ended this month at one thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixteen cents. And that is my report.
Okay, thank you for that, Chris. Um, we can't pass the can around, but maybe soon we'll be passing the can around again. But, okay, um, moving on, we're gonna go with two point five corresponding secretary, Dorothy Wong.
Hi, good evening again, everybody. So I'm just gonna give you some updates on, uh, what's going on in our community calendar. And we want to, of course, applaud the continuance of the Altadena Farmers Market, uh, that is operating in person, four P. M. to seven P. M., uh, and adding to their creativity of different events coming up. So check them out, uh, every Wednesday, four to seven, at Loma Alta Park. Um, also coming up, let me see my highlights here. Um, the Coffee Gallery is back in action, so check them out. I'll add some links. There's gonna be live performances starting, um, February seventeenth. And, uh, every day after that, there's a bunch of live performances at the Coffee Gallery. Uh, check that out. And then next Tuesday is, uh, the Greater L. A. Homeless Count Altadena. We have forty-four volunteers, um, that have signed up so far out of fifty. And, uh, we encourage fellow council members and community members who want to sign up. They Count Will You. Um, and, um, let's, uh, count our homeless neighbors here in Altadena. So you can sign up at They Count Will You. And also I have a link, um, on the website for February twenty-second. Volunteers are welcomed as well. If you want to help out, um, with check-in, just let us know. And we're also accepting, um, any donations for food or snacks, um, to support our volunteers. Uh, and you can reach out to myself, Dorothy Wong at AltadenaTownCouncil.org. Uh, Madeline Barber is also co-coordinator right now. And, um, can reach out to Madeline as well. Uh, let's see, also coming up, uh, we have a Black History Month celebration at Avacyn School, nineteen nineteen Pinecrest on two twenty-five. Uh, Lift Every Voice. And, um, that will be some great historical information of longtime Altadena and Pasadena residents. So, uh, I'll put the flyer up there on the website. Um, we also have our Safe Streets Committee meeting Thursday, February twenty-fourth at seven P. M. And, uh, I'm sure Sam will be talking about this, but there is a really great opportunity that our parks are offering, which is, uh, contract classes. And February twenty-third will be, um, a webinar, so you can learn more about it. So it's a great way for contractors, independent contractors, uh, to be creative in their own community. So check that out. I'll also put the link on the website. And if you would like to add any information, please send me an email, Dorothy.Wong@AltadenaTownCouncil.org. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Thank you for that. Um, maybe, um, Victoria will bake cookies and give them for that. Anyway, well, thank you. We're gonna move on to the three point one swearing in of Billy Malone. And before we do that, I want to say thank you to all the candidates who threw their hats into the ring to represent Census Track forty-six oh two. We had some really good candidates. Is that okay? Did I say that right, forty-six oh two? Yes, okay. And, and I just want to say that it just shows how engaged our community is and ready to work. Um, I encourage all of the, uh, candidates to get involved in our community it with, maybe with our committees. Land use is a good place to start. We need you. And so we welcome you, um, here, uh, with us at the town council. Uh, I'll move on to, uh, pass it on to Chris O'Malley.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so it seems like the special election never ends, but this is the last thing, I swear. Uh, Billy Malone won the special election last month. And Captain Williams, representing the county, has been kind enough to volunteer to swear him in. And, uh, that's, that's what's gonna happen now. Captain Williams.
All right, thank you. Um, hello, everybody. Uh, Mr. Malone, it's my pleasure to swear you in. So if you don't mind, would you please raise your right hand? And then, uh, just answer the question. Do you accept the position bestowed upon you on behalf of the community? And do you pledge to faithfully execute all duties and responsibilities and to uphold the town council's bylaws and ethical standards during your term in office?
I do.
On that note, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move right along. Public Safety Reports, four point one, California Highway Patrol Officer Jonathan Boyd.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, Officer Boyd's not present this evening. This is Officer Bay. Hopefully you guys can see me. I'm trying to get my, my light going here. So Officer Bay with California Highway Patrol. I just wanted to do a quick report of the collisions that occurred last month of January. We had thirteen, uh, collisions involving vehicles. Um, out of those thirteen collisions, uh, there were three that had injuries involved that parties were transported. And out of those three, uh, one was a vehicle versus pedestrian. So, um, with that being said, I was, I was out, uh, last month as my initial month of, of enforcement within this role. And I, I made a lot of, lot of friends and made a lot of contacts regarding people and, and crosswalks, uh, around, um, around the, uh, the schools in our area. So I'm very big on that, making sure pedestrians get across safely. Um, a few things I just want to quickly, uh, highlight is, um, we have our Distractive, um, Driving Month coming up. So I want to make sure everyone is aware that, uh, we're gonna be out in force. We're gonna be trying to make sure that all the, the drivers are obeying traffic laws and also being aware of their surroundings. So just kind of a public service announcement regarding that. And then also, uh, myself, Officer Boyd and actually Officer Keller are trying to, um, kind of reach out and do more events within the community, uh, so that we can kind of, um, coordinate ours, you know, Drive Start and Start Smart programs. So there is gonna be an event that we're gonna be at. It's, uh, it's gonna be in May. Um, but, uh, more information regarding that maybe next month. But we're trying to basically trying to communicate more with the community and see if we can attend more events that we can kind of have presentations for. So if you guys have any ideas, please do not hesitate to contact either myself or Officer Keller or Officer Boyd, if you have our contact information. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I see the other thing, I see him there. No, Officer Keller. Once, twice.
It was Officer Allender.
I'm here.
Oh, there's Officer Keller.
Yeah.
Hello, how are you guys doing today?
Good, good.
What was the question?
Just, did you have something to say? I just saw you there to acknowledge that you were here.
Oh, no, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, trying to do my best to not interrupt Bay. He is doing excellent. I'm really happy that he's got the hang of this, talking to the community. Alls I have to say is, uh, if you have any questions, let us know. Victoria, I love getting your emails. And I'm sorry I didn't send out the crashes today. I was, I was working on it and then time flew by and I had to go to court. And then it was the end of day and things came up. We talked about it today. We're gonna do it first of the month, every month, and get it to you ASAP so that we can, uh, go over whatever we need to go over with you. I apologize.
No worries.
We got this next month.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you both for being.
Chair Jones, we have time for questions?
Sure, are there questions?
Um, if I can go first, since I'm here. Um, I did want to thank Officers Bay and Keller and whomever else might be on your patrol for your diligence in patrolling, um, Altadena Arts Magnet in particular. Um, as you know, we have been working to address the security, I'm sorry, the safety issue at El Molino and Calaveras. And just today, we put a motion before the Board of Supervisors to, um, approve an additional crossing guard and to rework our crossing guard situation at both schools. And the motion passed. So we should be getting some help sooner than later. Um, in addition to that, the county is working on some, um, on center striping. We talked about this, I think, last month. One of my biggest concerns is on Calaveras. When we have car line headed west on Calaveras and parked cars along East Calaveras, we have, today in particular was awful. There were double parkers next to car line and double parkers next to the parked cars. And it left no room really to get around either. And then we had parents jaywalking. So it's a, it's, I, I do want to talk, Dr. Shekel from Altadena Arts Magnet happens to be here tonight. I will share with her some of the, um, some of the events that you guys put on. And I do think we ought to, I know you came to our P. T. A. meeting, but I think we definitely need to do something, um, else with the parents because I really do not think that they understand how dangerous it is.
Yeah, I, I, I definitely understand, um, Ms. Knapp. Uh, I, I like to patrol that, that area as well. And I see a lot of people making that, that no U-turn, which is causing a lot of, um, congestion. And they're trying to give me an excuse saying, oh, well, we're just trying to park in this, the, the driveway. And then, oh, then we're just gonna back out. And I'm just, uh, educating them in the, in the sense of enforcement because, uh, that's the only way that they're really gonna learn. And then a lot of pedestrian crosswalk or traffic, rather, going, um, west, westbound on Calaveras where, where the line is. And, you know, I just see a lot of close calls and it's just, uh, it's, it's tough. I, I understand. I, I know, I know what you're talking about regarding the, the cars being parked along the curb. It's hard for me to talk to people and, you know, pull them over when I'm blocking part of the, the lane there, too. So it's, it's definitely a challenge as well. I, I do acknowledge that. But hopefully if we're more out in, in, uh, making our presence known and, and then maybe the, the parents will understand. But I, I do get a lot of thank yous for, for being out there. So it's, it's, it's pretty good.
Yeah, it is definitely a source, uh, it's on top of mind for a lot of parents. And there is a lot of appreciation, certainly not those that are maybe getting a ticket that day. But we definitely appreciate you. I can't tell you how, how much we do. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Knapp. Uh, Ms. Knapp, go ahead and, uh, I'll get ahold of you next week sometime. And maybe we can get together and get a game plan for, uh, some of those issues to, uh, and get with the school so that we can try to squash some of those jaywalking and turning issues. Um, let's get together on that.
That'd be great.
All right.
Okay, any more questions? I can't get everybody, there's two screens. So if you have a question, it's okay just to speak up. Okay, I don't hear any questions. We'll move on. Four point two, the Aldeanation Captain Jabari Williams and Deb Havistad.
Hello, everybody, again. So, uh, I'll try to be very brief. I have, uh, with me a few guests, a couple of guests. Altadena Station is within, uh, East Patrol Division. And, uh, East Patrol Division is comprised of about six sheriff stations over a vast area. And, uh, the person that's in charge of, uh, East Patrol Division and those stations and so much more is our chief. And we have here with us Chief Jorge Valdez, who was, uh, recently promoted and assigned to East Patrol. And, uh, he's here just to say a few words, uh, if you don't mind, chief.
Uh, good afternoon, can you hear me? Uh, well, first and foremost, my name is George Valdez, but like Captain Williams said, I am the new, uh, chief of East Patrol Operations. Um, first and foremost, I'd like to take, uh, say thank you to the, the town council for allowing me to speak. I look forward to working with the Altadena Town Council with Captain Williams to, um, help address any issues you have within your area. And I really look forward to it. I'm very humbled and honored to be part of this. And, uh, I, I hopefully eventually wish to meet everybody in person when we have that opportunity to do so. But thank you very much for allowing me to introduce myself and speak.
Thank you, chief. Uh, the chief has been to Altadena Station and he's seen the community. And, uh, he's very supportive, so, uh, we thank him for that. Uh, also, um, you know, here at the station, at most every stations, uh, we have our, our turnover. So people, you know, they come and they go. That's the same for our sergeants. So, um, since I've gotten here, since I've arrived, we lost maybe three or four sergeants. Uh, and I have here one of the sergeants here, uh, Deputy Sergeant, Sergeant, uh, Marcos Rosales. So our philosophy here at the station is, you know, uh, if we, uh, we may live in another community, uh, we definitely spend a lot of time working here in Altadena. And we need to adopt Altadena as our own community. So, uh, you will be seeing, once we get more sergeants in, while we'll be introducing them to the town council and the community. So I just wanted to introduce Sergeant Rosales, if you don't mind, just saying a few words. Introduce yourself. I got you on mute.
Is that better? Okay, uh, thank you for having me tonight. Thanks for the council, uh, again, allowing me to be here and introduce myself. Marcos Rosales, uh, twenty-three years on, uh, recently reassigned to Altadena. Happy to be here and look excited, uh, look forward for an exciting career and, and helping out the community here in Altadena.
Thank you, appreciate it. And as we get our sergeants in, hopefully we'll be getting much more in. We'll introduce them to the, the town council. Uh, so real fast, uh, great thing, crime is down about twenty-eight percent. So that's a good thing, uh, compared to last year. We want to keep it that way. Uh, we had our catalytic converter, uh, event a couple of weeks ago. And it was very successful. It was a great event. We had nearly a hundred cars come by and we etched, uh, uh, catalytic converters. And that will help us in, uh, investigation and hopefully to deter people from stealing, uh, the converters. Also, uh, we were able to use some, uh, equipment to help us etch the catalytic converters. Normally you would have to wait a while, let it cool down. And then we'd get up there by hand and ride it with a little etcher. Kind of looks like maybe a third grader rode it in there. But this time we had something very professional. Uh, and it worked out great. So hopefully, uh, we can get, uh, some of that equipment here at Altadena. So we can. some of that equipment here at Altadena so we can use it regularly. And also we can use it to etch almost anything so we can serialize uh maybe uh, you know, landscapers' uh equipment, bikes, things of that nature, so we can serialize as as much as as possible. So hopefully in the future, we'll we'll can get that equipment. Uh, moving on. We uh, I remember when I first got here, there was uh some talk about maybe getting some better neighborhood watch signs. Uh, we have a few in and I'm going to show them now. This is, this is the old way of sharing your screens. Also, for businesses, we have bigger ones to put on the wall. So uh, we are limited in what we have. I think I have maybe eleven of them. Uh, so I hope to get some more. I'll put in an order for some more, but uh each uh town council member should uh come by and get one if you want them. Maybe if you see one and he's replaced in your uh neighborhoods and we figure out a way to put them up where there's some public works or we have a deputy here, put it up. You just let us know. We'll we'll figure it all out.
I have a question.
Yes.
Hi, um, i- is there, do you guys have a list of who the active uh neighborhood watch groups are? Because I know, like in my neighborhood, there's not, I shouldn't say this out loud, but there should, there's not an active neighborhood watch group, but we have a sign, a number of signs around. And it seems like if you have only a few, that we ought to make sure that we're giving them to the people that need, you know, need them to show up really well because they're very active.
I am not aware of a list. We may have one. I just have to look into it. But if we don't, we need to get one uh established.
Well, and we also should be working on neighborhood watch groups. I I'm feeling like there is a list there some that somebody, maybe Deb knows. Deb, do you know if there's, isn't there a list of neighborhood watch groups or anything? Are you aware of that?
Yes, it's old, needs to be updated. Um, but I think some of it's, uh, you know, it's not terrible. It's not in terrible shape.
You know who has it?
Well, I know I have it.
Oh.
And some other, some other people have it and I'll make sure that Captain Williams has it. I'll send it to him tomorrow to make sure he has it too.
Yeah, I'm just saying if there's a small number and there, I know there's a cost associated with them that we ought to put them where they're needed first.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, luckily we were able to get these for no, no cost, so.
Oh.
Try to work on that again, so.
Excellent.
We'll see what happens. Oh, and the last thing. Um, so you guys know about a month ago, we had a very powerful windstorm come through Altadena and caused some damage. And uh there were some things that uh we learned from this here at the station. And uh one of the main things was uh coordination with Public Works and Edison and maybe communicating uh better with them. That way we can get that information out to the public as they call in. And that was another issue, nine-one-one calls. Of course, that worked because uh Crescent Valley Station takes our nine-one-one calls, just the way it works. But this time our business lines actually went down. And that caused a lot of confusion and a lot of uh concern for people that were calling in. Normally, if a business line goes down, we make arrangements to have our lines transferred to a neighboring station. Uh, we thought we did that, but uh some people were uh trying to call in. And perhaps we're getting busy, busy signals. We found out about this and this is something that we have to work on because that's not supposed to happen. Um, and if that does happen, maybe we can have some type of uh message saying that our business lines are down. They'll be up very soon, but uh uh we even sent people over to Crescent Valley to take our 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 calls. So uh that's something where we have to look into. Uh, another big thing is maybe utilizing our resources better, namely our reserves and volunteers. Our volunteers and reserves, they're there for us when we need them. And uh we have to work on a better way of getting in top contact with them and they getting in contact with us so that we can utilize them for maybe traffic control or to drive around the areas to assess damage, uh, things of that nature. We had uh Deb go out. She's one of our volunteers and actually uh did some work for us in a certain area where it was needed. Uh, but uh we need to utilize our volunteers more uh because they're there for us. Deb, did I miss anything? Anything you want to add?
No, sir, I don't think so.
Pardon?
Dorothy.
Oh, and Dorothy, thanks also for helping me know where I was supposed to go. Dorothy was pedaling around with her bicycle all over our part of sort of central Altadena. And um she spotted me and said, I need help directing traffic. So anyway, I went to do that. Thanks, Dorothy.
So we have meetings in place. Uh, we've been having these meetings for a while, but uh uh we're gonna continue to have these meetings because we need to uh practice on what we're going to do just in case uh an incident does occur. Whether it's a major disaster like an earthquake or something like the windstorm that came through Altadena. This was an opportunity for us to practice and we didn't capitalize on that on this time, but uh you know, God forbid, something like that happens again, but when it does, we'll be even more prepared. Uh, that's all I have to uh present for today, uh unless I forgot something and I have any, if anybody has any questions, I'm I'm here to answer.
One, one, one question about the catalytic converters. I mean, do they wind up in junkyards or metal recyclers?
Where do they wind up? Yeah, people take them to recycle, recycling yards and or maybe someone that knows where they can uh, you know, recycle it for money. We hope that when we serialize the property, they try to take it to a place that would deter that recycling yard or the person taking it from actually buying it. So hopefully that serves as a deterrent. But yeah, that's where they are taken because of the precious metals inside.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any more questions? Okay, and I want to thank Deb and um Dorothy and Nick and out in the windstorm and started to work. They and checked out the neighborhood and passed around message. Thank you for doing that. That was pretty brave. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our fire report. LA County Fire, Marie Greckin.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, I have the report for January. Uh, for the month of January, there were a total of three hundred and ninety-six responses in Altadena. Uh, we did have three fires. Two structure fires, one uh was uh accidental caused by an uh unattended candle in a detached garage. And from the, from the garage, it spread to an RV. Uh, on the twenty-second on Harriet Street, a little more significant structure fire there. Um, a a victim of the um wind event. Uh, a power line, a downed power line um damaged, was got damaged and then it uh ignited the outside patio deck. And then from there, it extended into the attic of the home. The home itself was unoccupied at the time, so no- nobody was living there. And then we had a vehicle fire on the twenty-third. And then I also listed here, um, we had thirty-one total instances of either power lines down, arcing wires or wires down. Most of those occurred on that January twenty-second date during that uh significant wind event. I would say I I tried to count them as I was seeing them and I would say maybe um twenty-five, twenty-six of them to from the whole month were on that one day. So we had uh three hundred and five medical calls uh with two hundred and sixteen patients transported. Uh, and then I've got your traffic collisions listed there. And then the other thing we started doing, uh, starting in January was uh providing a safety tip of the month. And uh I had already developed a safety tip, uh, didn't, didn't realize that there was the uh an incident involving an unattended candle, but the first safety tip is never leave candles burning unattended. So and the other ones for the month are never leave space heaters unattended or on overnight. Uh, and when you are using space heaters, make sure you're not putting anything combustible in front of them or too close to them that might uh catch. And never use your oven to heat your home. Uh, so those are our safety tips. And then I wanted to also just take a moment to introduce all of you to one of our battalion chiefs in Battalion Four, Chris Allender. Uh, he joined us here tonight just to say hello and to, and I just wanted all of you to meet him.
Thank you, Maria. Hi, everybody. My name is Chris Allender. I'm one of the new uh battalion chiefs in uh this region. This is a LA County Fire Battalion Four. Uh, I'm one of three of us uh that are in charge of this battalion. And I just wanted to thank you for the invitation and uh introduce myself to y'all.
You for being here. Thank you.
And did anybody have any questions about the uh report?
Any questions? Okay, I don't hear any questions. I looked on both screens, so no, but thank you, Maria. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, we're going to move on to special presentations. And the first one is Nikki Winslow, the library director and Altadena Library District's CFD bonds on sale. So how can we buy these bonds?
And all right. Okay, thank you, Veronica. Good evening, everyone. So um our presentation tonight is going to take the place of our usual updates, so uh I'll be back next month to share more of the updates, but we are very excited to share the news that we're going to be selling the bonds uh with the proceeds to um renovate both of our libraries, which we're in the design process of right now. Uh, so I'm just going to introduce uh two members of our bond issuance team that are going to share the screen and update everyone on this process and how we got to this point. So first I have Doug Anderson. He is with Urban Futures and is serving as the Library District's Municipal Advisor. And we're also joined by Mike Kavanaugh, who uh works for Hilltop Securities and has been serving as our bond underwriter as well. Um, I do want to say they've been a dream to work with, uh, experts for sure and happy to pass it over to them. Thanks, Doug and Mike.
Thank you, Nikki. Appreciate that. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. Hang on. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Great. Well, good evening. Again, I'm Doug Anderson with Urban Futures. We are the financial advisor to the library district. We've been helping them with the uh bond issuance process. Uh, Mike Kavanaugh, who's also on the meeting tonight, is the bond underwriter, Hilltop Securities. They will be the firm that actually sells the bonds. I'm going to ask him to talk about that process here in a little bit, but I just wanted to update everybody as to how we've gotten to this point. Okay, initially, the uh district selected the finance team members through an RFP process. Uh, once the team was selected, uh, we started on the preparation of the basic bond documents that are needed for the bond sale. Those have all been prepared. They were approved by the district at their meeting on December twentieth. At that point, uh, we were able to uh go out for a bond rating and from Standard and Poor's and have the bonds rated. Once that uh I'm sorry. Okay, so step two, we we had the bonds, um, the documents approved by the the board or the trustees. And then the preliminary official statement, which is the document that'll go out to bond buyers and is basically like a prospectus. Talks about the district and the bonds, the project. Uh, that was sent to Standard and Poor's for their review and they came back on the next page here with a fantastic bond rating of a double A minus. That is really unheard of for a community facilities district. Uh, because this district is built out and mature, uh, it received a lot higher rating than a normal CFD bond uh issue would receive. Most CFD bonds are for new developments and some of the projects are not even built yet. So this is a mature district, received a double A minus rating. We're very excited about that. The next step and what we're here to talk about is this week. And tomorrow and Thursday, we will be pricing the bonds. Uh, that means we'll be setting the interest rates and then actually taking orders and selling the bonds. And I'll have Mike talk a little bit more about that later. Uh, after we get the rate set, uh, the official statement will be finalized with those rates. Uh, the final documents will be prepared and our bond closing, when the district actually is is uh set to get the money to spend on the projects, will be scheduled for March third. All right, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mike Kavanaugh to let you talk or have him talk about uh the actual sale process and how it the uh town uh residents can be actual investors in these bonds.
Hey, do you want to um stop sharing your screen?
Oh, I'm, you there, Doug?
Yeah, let me.
Sorry, I I uh internet dropped.
There we go.
Okay, Mike, you're up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I I'm I'm here. Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, I'm here, Mike Kavanaugh with Hilltop Securities. I'm the bun- bond underwriter for the proposed CFD bonds, which means our our firm will be uh selling the bonds to the public, to you as retail investors or to institutional investors. We have an order period open tomorrow morning, or excuse me. Um, tomorrow afternoon, we're going to kind of set some interest rates. So our order period, when we actually go out to the public and and receive orders and take orders from residents would be Thursday morning, probably between ten AM, or excuse me, eight AM and ten AM on Thursday morning. So i- if there are residents who want to set up an account to buy the bonds, uh, we have a name and a number at Hilltop to direct you. Uh, if that doesn't work, you can always call me directly.
So to reiterate, I think what Mike is saying, um, if buyers don't have an account set up with Hilltop Securities, when the bonds go up for sale on the morning of the seventeenth, which is Thursday, they'll probably get sold within the first few hours is what we're assuming and they won't have the ability to purchase. So anyone that is interested, and I did forward all of the um council members, the e-blast that we put out with all of this information. Please share that out with your constituents, but with keeping in mind that they'll need to set up their account with Hilltop tomorrow um by close of business, so that um Thursday morning, they'll, uh, Hilltop will reach out to the people that have set up those accounts to take orders. And um local residents are getting priority over some of those other institutional buyers that Mike mentioned. So uh again, um, I can reforward that email if that would be helpful to the council. And include, that includes my email address as well as um I'll include Mike's too. So that if anybody wants to reach out to him or I tomorrow, we'll be available to make sure that their accounts can get set up. Because again, they're, with it being such a high rating, we're going to be selling them as premium bonds. And the assumption is that they're going to sell like hotcakes and go quickly, so. Um, we're happy to answer any questions anybody has. I know this seems very like last minute-ish, but that's kind of the way this works. The preliminary official statement couldn't come out until we got our um our rating from Standard and Poor's. So that was within the last week and a half. So this is just kind of the way these things roll at a kind of rapid pace.
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, how does this relate to Measure Z? Now, do we buy the bonds in Measure Z when the funds come in? They pay the bond bonds off or how does that work?
So um the the Measure Z allowed us to form the Community Facilities District. That's um the funding vehicle. Uh, we we formed the the Facilities District to be able to do that. Um, the measure allowed us to bond up to twenty-four million towards the building projects. Uh, we worked with the uh bond issuance team as well as the CFD committee to establish that we have decided to bond out twenty-one point one-two-five, not the full twenty-four. Um, because with us selling premium bonds, we're estimating that we're going to get between twenty-three and twenty-four million in proceeds because of um the interest rates being low and people being willing to pay extra to buy these premium bonds because they're so low risk. Um, so Measure Z set that twenty-four million limit. And now, once we bond out this, within the next few weeks, the taxpayers will see this special tax lien on their property bills starting in the next fiscal year. And what we collect from the taxes will pay the debt service towards these bonds and pay back the bondholders. So we'll get the money upfront, and then we'll be paying that back over the next 30 years with people. And we're going to be sending out a mailer to all property owners in the beginning of April outlining all of this. So it's not a surprise when they see it on their tax bill, as well as for those that would qualify for a low income tax exemption, how they can do so before June 30th. So there's more information to come, but by that point, the bonds will have been sold. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And now, are these like five-year bonds, 10-year bonds?
It's a, it's a 30-year bond issue.
It's a 30-year. So if I bought, and I'm just trying to understand, so if I bought into it, my bond, my payoff would be 30 years before I see my money? Is that what?
If you chose the longest term, yes. However, you can choose any of the terms from anywhere from 16 months all the way out to 30 years and everything in between. And there will be different interest rates for each one of those different maturities.
Okay. All right, that, that helps. It would have been nice to have, I don't know, just one community session on this. It's just really not anything we do every day, so it's hard to understand. But I kind of understand. Okay, because I know I worked for the city and they sell bonds. They sold bonds. So I kind of get it. But thank you. Okay.
Another question there?
Questions? Oh, Chris, go ahead.
Can't hear you, Chris.
What is the interest rate on the 30-year? Do you know yet?
We have, well, Mike, I'll let you handle that. We have a guesstimate at this point.
Yeah, our estimate, and we look to set these tomorrow, but we're looking to price a, a bond, a yield to call of around a 285, a yield to maturity around a 345. So it depends on how you view the yield. But I would say between 280 and 350 on the 30-year.
And those are tax, tax exempt rates.
Tax exempt rates. So the blended yield to the district, what we call the all-in true interest cost, is under 350. That's your borrowing rate, is under 350 on average.
Trust me, they're speaking Greek to me, too.
When you say 350, is that 3.5% interest? Is that what that is?
Correct.
Yes. Yeah.
Basis. Okay, got it. Okay. Any more?
And I do, I do see that Deb had a question in the chat about the slide saying March 1st. So March 3rd will be the closing, but the sale will take place on the 17th. So anyone that's interested in purchasing would need to do so Thursday morning. So I hope that answers that question. And again, I'll re-forward. And Deb and John, you have my email if you want. And I'm sure you got the e-blast that came out from the library, but I'll reshare that out tonight with all of the council members, along with Mike and I's emails, so that if anyone has questions tomorrow, please feel free to send them our way. Victoria?
Nikki, I know that this has come up very quickly from when you originally started this process to Chair Jones's point. Is there any possibility, probability, or way that you could record a short video, you, Mike, Doug, together, that we could literally push out tomorrow to residents? Because, as you know, we have no communication mechanism to get to all residents. There's no paper. There's no local channels. We do use social media, and the library is a huge hub for that. But I worry that this is the first really that the community is hearing about it. If they don't watch this on playback tomorrow, they're not going to know. So I don't know. I mean, literally, like I would say, like a Marco Polo would be great, but like an MP3 or an MP4 file, something that we could just literally post up to our website, post up individually, send out to constituents, just so that the town residents of Altadena know.
Well, is there anyone that could take this part of this video and share it?
That's a very good question and something that I think we could probably ask Pasadena Media offline.
Yeah, this Diane, too. I want, Victoria, I think that we, we just need to be careful with what we're sharing, because I think people should be talking to their financial advisors to make the decision and not us. So.
Agreed. I just think that they need to be aware that it's happening at all. And it's not really that it's coming from the town council, but just that tomorrow is literally the only day that we can make anybody aware.
Yeah. Would, would anything go in the Pasadena Star News or some, some of the news, the real honest-to-God news outlets around or no?
Yeah.
Huh? I don't know. Maybe not.
Yeah, we'll connect, Victoria. Yeah, trust me. I, we've been preparing for this for months, but like, it's just the way the timeline played out, you know?
And then I have one more quick question. Do you have to sell a certain amount? Or what if you get a lot of sales or you don't get barely any sales? Does it make a difference?
Mike, you want to, you want to address that and maybe talk about institutional interest as well?
Yeah. So as Nikki pointed out, we're going to give full priority to retail buyers, city of Altadena, and even residents of California. But specifically, any retail buyers from Altadena will make sure their orders are filled first. What likely to happen is we'll have institutions that want to come in and buy $5 million or $10 million. What we, residents want to buy $5,000 or $10,000, right? We don't have enough residents to sell all the bonds. This is going to be driven by institutional sales. We obviously want to make sure all the residents are taken care of first, and that's why we're here to elaborate on that. And, and I hear you about the timing. I don't know what we could have done different, but we are where we are. Interest rates are rising is another reason. I would say, hey, we can delay this, but every day, interest rates are going up, and it's just going to cost everyone more and more money as interest rates go up. I lost my train of thought, but.
Maybe, Mike, you want to comment on, for instance, if you had $18 million worth of orders and what you would do in that instance?
Yeah. So i- if we go through the process, and two things are likely to happen, is we may have $40 million in order or $50 million in orders, right? Which we saw a lot of last year, where there's a big demand for municipal bonds. In which case, we would lower interest rates. We would save the residents' money, and we would lose some of those buyers, but because we had so many, we would force out some of the higher buyers. I- if the opposite happened, say we only sell 20 of the 21 million, what we would do as Hilltop Securities, we value our client working with the district. We would take the risk away from the district and likely underwrite. Or what we say, we would go at risk. We take the risk away from the issuer. And this is all, you know, negotiated and discussed with Doug Anderson, the district, to make sure, you know, we look at it as we're doing a favor, but if there's a different opinion, we're listening. But we would, in that case, take our capital and put it at risk for the benefit of the district. So a few things could happen. It's, it's never you sell exactly 21 million. You know, there's always a give or take somewhere. And if we sell too much, it's a benefit to the district, because we can hopefully lower interest rates. If we don't sell enough, generally, we will take the risk because we think we know what we're doing in that instance.
Okay. Well, thank you for the information. Thank you. Thank you, Nikki.
Of course.
Thank you for.
I'll, I'll hopefully get in touch either tonight or tomorrow morning to see if we can somehow snip this. We also have the Community Facilities District meeting that took place last Wednesday, where Doug and, and Mike kind of outlined all of this as well that we could share out. I don't, I have like nothing but meetings tomorrow, so I don't see myself having any time to create something. But I think just if they watch this, it's pretty informational, and it'll give them a sense of what they need to do.
And the library sent out an email. Why don't we just forward that email again or that email blast? The town council can do it from, from their site.
But if they, even if you provide a link and say, start watching at this point in the video, it might answer some of the questions that we've been asked tonight that would be top of mind for other people in the community.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'll work with you on that, Victoria.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on just in the interest of time, but thank you for that. And hopefully, we do well. So, okay. So now we're going to have 5.2 Altadena Arts, Elliot, Dr. Shrek. Is that right?
Shekko.
Shekko, shekko. Guys need just regular names. Just regular.
No problem, no problem. Thank you very much for having me. Good evening, town council members. I am in education, as you know, so I get up at 5:30. So I was just fading away over here. So I'm very glad to be with you right before I close my eyes for sleep. So I am Dr. Benita Shekko. I am the proud principal of Altadena and Elliot Arts Magnet. I was last before you all, five years ago, when I was first named principal at Altadena Arts. And so much has changed since then. And other than the worldwide pandemic, it has all been really, really great. So I'm just going to share a little bit of information with you, because you are so important to me as a leader in your community. So I'm just, again, really thrilled to be with you. I wish I could be with you in person. So I'm going to share some data with you. When I first took over as principal in 2017, Altadena Arts Magnet was very much under-enrolled with 187 students. Five years later, we now have 460 students in attendance. We have no more space. The families are bursting down our doors to register. We started a French dual-language immersion program in 2017, which I thought might be a little strange, because I didn't know how many French speakers or how much interest there was in French in the community, but it has proven to be very popular. Families are coming not only from within the town of Altadena, but also without the PUSD borders. So we're getting families from other school districts who are coming in. They're discovering beautiful Altadena, and now they're buying or renting homes in Altadena. We received a $5 million federal arts magnet grant in 2017, and we are now in year five of that grant. And that grant has allowed us to really build up our arts programs. So we are in the top 3% of the nation of schools that are elementary-age children who receive all five art forms within the school day. So, you know, if you go to a typical elementary school, children might get, you know, some recorder or maybe some choir. At Altadena Arts Magnet, students are getting music, dance, theater, visual arts, and graphic arts, all within the school day. So I am a big believer in the arts. I was a music and drama teacher for 16 years, most of those years in Pasadena Unified. And I did my dissertation on arts and what it does for children. We see academic achievement rise. The other big piece of data that I'm really proud of is that Altadena Arts Magnet was one of the lowest-performing elementary schools in the district when I came on. And we were able to raise our scores in English Language Arts, up 37%, and in math, 11%. So we haven't had any of those tests in a while, but we've really made some great strides. And I believe it's because of arts education. We know that the arts allow students to lower that effective filter that lets in greater academic input. The other thing that's interesting to note that we don't talk about very much outside of our school walls, but it's something we talk about quite, quite a bit within PUSD, is that Altadena Arts Magnet, formerly Altadena Elementary, was considered racially and socio-economically isolated, which is one reason why we were able to get this grant. This is actually a desegregation grant. So when the students of a school do not match the community that that school is in, then there's a problem, and we consider those children to be isolated. And so we met all of our grant goals. And so now, if you look at our school, if you were to walk, walk in any day, you'll see this beautifully integrated school with all different types of children from all different types of backgrounds. So that's been really beautiful. So it was a natural, it was really a natural next step to have the pleasure and the honor to now take on Elliot Arts Magnet. Elliot Arts had the same grant that we had several years before. And we also offer at Elliot the most amazing programs. We have a ceramic studio. We have green screen technology. Our students go to what's called the fabrication lab. We have a museum on site. We have a dance studio and an art studio and a music studio at both campuses. Because of the work that we've been able to accomplish at the elementary site, we are now being honored at the National Magnet Conference in April as a nationally certified demonstration magnet school. So that means that if we weren't having a pandemic, people would be able to come from all over the country and visit our school as being a demonstration school. So one of the great things that's happening now, being principal of both sites, is that we are now able to create this beautiful articulation between the elementary site and the middle school. We were only capturing about 30% of the students from Altadena Elementary who were choosing Elliot. They were, they were not choosing Elliot. And so it's a wonderful opportunity that I have now, because the families at Altadena know me, and they, you know, they trust me. Many of the families have several students, so they might have some at Altadena and some at Elliot already. And so now we have this really great opportunity to build on all the amazing work that's been done at Elliot and take it even further and soar into the future. So some of the things that we're able to do this year is our very first ever K through eighth grade spring musical. So I would love if you all came. We're going to be in person in the Elliot Arts Magnet Auditorium. We are doing the Jungle Book. And this will be the first time that we're going to be all together, kindergartners through eighth graders. We had 79 students audition to be a part of this, and we took a cast of 50. We have professional lighting and sound, professional musicians in the pit, and it is going to be an extravaganza, the likes of which you've never seen. So I like to say that it will not be a typical school show. We have really high standards for our students, because the question that I always ask myself is, if we're a magnet school and we're doing things that look exactly like any other school, then we're not doing a good job. We're a magnet school, which means our students should be performing at a really high level in our particular signature program, which is arts. So those dates are April 28th, 29th, and 30th, the Jungle Book at the Elliot Arts Magnet Auditorium. And then lastly, we are planning our first ever Faux Chela. So you've all heard of Coachella. So this is Faux Chela. This brings in the French. And this is going to be an outdoor festival at Elliot Arts Magnet in May, where we're going to be highlighting our local students and their bands, but also bringing in bands from the community and the greater Los Angeles area. So that'll be on a Saturday in May, and we hope that you will all attend. So that's it for my formal presentation. If there's any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Well, thank you for that. Thank you for doing such a wonderful job with our children. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me tonight.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. Come back anytime.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Victoria, for bringing her. Okay, we're going to move on, and we are right on time. So we still need to keep to our time limits, and we'll be out of here on time. Okay, Sam Parks and Rick, 6.1.
Hey, good evening, everybody. So, so for the upcoming session that we have will be the spring session. We have the Everybody Plays program, which is continuing at Loma Alta Park, and it's Monday through Friday from 2:30 to 5:30 PM for youth ages seven to 17 years of age. And that's going to continue all the way through our spring session until May 27th. We have registration for our free basketball youth training program, and it's Tuesdays and Thursdays from 5. and it's Tuesdays and Thursdays from five thirty to seven. Uh and then on Fridays from five thirty to six thirty, and then on Saturdays from two PM to four PM. We also have our Sports For All Basketball, and that's gonna be on Saturdays. It's an additional basketball program training that we have from six, for six to eight-year-olds, and that's at nine AM. And then for nine and twelve-year-olds, it's at ten AM at Loma Alta. We also have our youth ba- uh T-ball registration, which is now open, and it starts uh, the season will start on April fifth, and it's for youth ages five to six-year-olds, and it's forty-three dollars. And you can visit our parks.la county.gov to register for the program. Over at Parks of Park, we also have our Recreation For All Youth Baseball Clinic, and that starts on March fifth. And we have our Youth Sports For All Baseball on Saturdays, which starts on April second. And that's for ages six to eight-year-olds and nine to twelve-year-olds. Six to eight is at eleven, and the nine to twelve is at, is at eleven AM. We also have a news program that we have um for people to sign up on. It's our Senior Pickleball, and it's open for registration. We actually have, um some of the sessions are almost full. It is free, and it's uh five thirty PM to seven PM, Tuesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. We also offer a free snack program at Parks of Park and at Loma Alta, Monday through Friday from three PM to four PM. And as Dorothy had mentioned earlier, we also have our, our Contract Class Program, which is currently ongoing. We have a couple more weeks in our winter session, and there are, there are offerings in our in-person and virtual classes. Uh however, we do have our summer session that's, I'm sorry, our, our spring session um that is now open for our class registration, and you can visit parks.la county.gov. And we have our summer instructional classes that are gonna be opening up, and applications um are gonna open up on February twenty-first. Uh we did have our first webinar today um for those new instructors that are wanting to, to provide new classes for ours, our parks across LA County. And our next webinar will be on Wednesday, February twenty-third at six PM. And you can visit parks.la county.gov forward slash become an instructor. And on there, that is what we're gonna be for our summer session, and classes can be virtual or in-person. Application opens, like I said, February twenty-first, and they close on March third, or when the application capacity of two hundred and fifty is reached. Um we have a, a reopening and the update of, of our COVID information about what's open for the parks. Uh as of yesterday, our, our parks for indoor use are open. Um our gyms are, are open for use as well, so um we do have open gym at Loma Alta that is available. And we also have our indoor rentals, um as of this time, or have not been given a date, but those will be opening pretty soon. We have indoor access for the public to the building and indoor programming, as I said, and outdoor programming is still ongoing that we offer with the Recreation For All. Um open gym is gonna be on Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, and it's gonna be from five PM to seven PM. We as, and lastly, we do have the, as uh Dorothy mentioned, tomorrow we do have the farmer's market and every Wednesday. Um so we look forward to continue to providing that for the community, and that wraps up my presentation.
Thank you, Sam. And could you pass all that on to Dorothy? So is that for?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Great job out there at the parks. We really have. Okay, um we're gonna move on to six point two, our own Dr. Sandra Thomas for the Chamber of Commerce.
Greetings, Madam Chair, and thank you. And to my fellow council members, um serving in Altadena Town Council, uh it is again my privilege to report to you on behalf of the Altadena Chamber of Commerce. For those of you who may not know, the Altadena Chamber of Commerce's only reason for existing is to assist the businesses in the Altadena and surrounding areas. Uh we have many exciting events uh already scheduled for our twenty-twenty-two calendar year, and it is my privilege to share a few with you. On February twenty-sixth, from nine to twelve, I mean, from ten to twelve, we will have a virtual event celebrating health, energy, and life purpose in twenty-twenty-two. It'll be hosted by Siddika Harashiki and Melanie Caldwell-Hodin. Uh please attend this session to lessen your stress and increase your potential for healthy aging and business success. In March, on the thirty-first, from ten to eleven AM, there will be another virtual event. And March is Women's History Month. We will be focusing on women in science and the importance of community outreach. Our speaker for that day will be Jocelyn Ferguson. She's the Chief Development Officer for Huntington Medical Research Institutes. Then on April second, from five to nine PM, we will be sponsoring a Mariposa Junction Night Market. Uh we will continue this event on the first Saturdays of the month from five PM to nine. And then in May, on May twentieth, from six PM to nine PM, the Altadena Chamber of Commerce will finally host its annual awards and installation dinner, we hope, um at the Altadena Town and Country Club. As you can see, we are hosting a variety of events designed um designed to meet the needs of our diverse membership. We look forward to seeing you at all of our events. Uh you can visit our website for more information. That's www dot Altadena Chamber dot org. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your time, Madam Chair. Spacking your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Are there any questions for Dr. Thomas? And I don't plan to attend the um Citizen of the Year and Business of the Year. So it's a fun event. Okay, um moving on, go on to uh Altadena Library District Chief Focus Group. I think this is the first time we've had this report, and Chris O'Malley is going to do that.
Uh, good evening, council members and neighbors online. Um so I think this might be the first, might be the second. I don't remember. Either way, uh it's been a little while, and I've been to a couple of these meetings uh for the Altadena Library Focus Group, which is a collection of various uh representatives of the community at large that give feedback uh as to how the bond money that we were talking about earlier is going to get spent on these remodels. Um the first uh, the first couple of meetings I went to were a brainstorming session essentially between the architects and the uh focus group um regarding our desires and expectations for the library remodel. Uh the architects got feedback remarkably well, uh and they adjusted their plan to put a lot more effort and money um into our Bob Lucas Library and Literacy Center right here in forty-six. Uh I think their ideas are pretty exciting. I'm just gonna share, these are preliminary ideas. These are not anything set in stone. These are just kind of them spitballing around, but I just wanted to give you an idea of what they're thinking. Um right here, the blue is the existing building. Uh and the, the pink stuff here is the additions that they're thinking about putting in in, in one way or another. And you can see, uh two rough ideas, both of significantly expand the usable space in the library, and uh both books and places to hang out and uh the literacy portion of it as well. They've got some like study rooms in here that I thought were cool, and they are keeping this outside area. Uh they wanna do like a reading, outside reading uh center for it. Uh the next meeting that I'm going to, we will be discussing ideas that they have for the main branch, and I'd be happy to report that uh, you know, at some point in the future. That's all I got for you. Any questions?
No question. Oh, ye- yes, there is.
Thank you, um Chris. I'm just curious about the um the discussion regarding the main library because of the architectural significance of the building. I know that's, you know, something the architects are likely thinking about, but I wonder how far along those conversations are in light of that historical component of the, the original building.
I hear you, and uh they're all aware of how much we love our uh, our main library building. They're not gonna do anything to, to mess it up. Uh we're gonna have conversations about that. I wanna say it's at the end of this month, and just uh we, we had some conversations earlier, just brainstorming what we expect, what we want, um what, what we, what we like about the library, and you know, all of us say we love the, we love the architecture, we love the building itself. Um and so they're gonna come back uh with some, some preliminary ideas, the one I showed you for Bob Lucas, and I will be happy to, to show you those when they get to me.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Okay, moving right along. Let's go on to um committee reports. Safe Streets, Dorothy?
Uh, thank you, Chair, Chair Jones. So uh I just wanted to uh invite everyone to attend uh our twenty-twenty-two Safe Streets Committee meetings. They are the fourth Thursday of every month, and uh we're starting at seven PM. So some of the highlights will be, um there is, again, a lot of work being done uh sort of planning out the San Gabriel Valley. So we actually happen to be in the San Gabriel Valley. Uh sometimes I forget that myself. Um but there is a San Gabriel Valley Greenway Network, which for us actually connects um from Eaton Canyon, relatively speaking, and it will actually take you to Amanti. So they're doing a lot of public engagement right now. Uh so that meeting is actually happening on February twenty-second, uh which will be um an hour and a half long, and they're workshops. So this is round two uh of the workshops. So if you wanna learn more, I'll definitely post it on our calendar, and if you have any questions. But it does sort of tie into, our bicycle master plan is up for updating. Um it hasn't been updated in a decade, so how that network connects to our uh bicycle plan would be definitely interesting. The other project is the San Gabriel Valley Transit feasibility study. And uh if you'd like to learn more about that, that is run by the Southern California Council of Governments, and I can put that link up. That event is two twenty-three at five PM, so things are coming up quickly. And also on our uh meeting on the twenty-fourth, we're gonna learn about um, in twenty-eighteen, we did a community pedestrian bicycling safety training that was hosted by California Walks and Berkeley Safe Trek. So they're now doing uh follow-up studies. In case we wanna follow up, we did a safe routes to school project at Jackson Elementary that was very fruitful for our community. Um and you can also learn more about their safe routes to schools uh programming. So we're going to learn more about that from Calwalks and Berkeley Safe Trek on two twenty-four. Um so that's it. Any questions?
Thank, oh, thank you. Thank you for keeping our streets safe, keeping us informed. All right, let's move on to land use. Diane Markison. You are muted.
I've been so good about it, and then screwed it up. Okay, um I, we did not have a land use meeting this month as we didn't have anything to review or vote on. Um however, I did want to let you know that from a Owen Brown Gravesite Committee perspective, those meetings have changed, and I wanted to make sure people knew what the new dates are. Um we're now having those for the next six months anyway. We're having them the second Thursday of the month at ten AM. Um and I don't know if everybody's aware, but when you're looking for anything at LA County Department of Regional Planning, it's planning.la county.gov. And for the Owen Brown Agenda, which also gives you a link that you can go, move, go, get into the Zoom meeting, it's, it's la county, planning.la county.gov slash agenda slash OBG, Owen Brown grave. Um so I encourage everybody to call in and listen if they can. I know it's been moved to, uh we used to have them at night. It's been moved to an earlier time, but I hope people can listen in. Um the other thing that I did wanna mention is there have been a lot of discussions lately. Um I, I, I think partially because we don't, we don't have um all of the latest info, but there've been a lot of discussions about the um building going in at Lincoln and Figueroa that we all love so much. And um I just wanted to say, and we'll sort of give an option to Veronica, but Veronica is our go-to person for um knowing everything that's going on with that building. And I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that, that if you have a question or a concern, and Veronica, I'll let you, if you have the latest or whatever, but everybody should be directing questions. She can, if she doesn't have the answer, she'll get it.
Thank you, Diane. Um Diane and I both with the supervisor's office and planning that there won't be a five-story building, but there is a plan in for a four-story building. Nothing has been approved, but plans have been submitted for a four-story building, and uh we know that we will um get the information first when um things move forward or backwards, however they go. But right now, um plans have been submitted for a four-story building. Um Daryl and I are pushing for um planning to follow our CSD with a three-story building. So um that's it, that.
Right, and I think, I think the nuance there that everybody needs to understand, right, Veronica, is that the four-story plans have been submitted, but they're not approved or going through the process yet. So while we're most hope, help, hope, I'm sorry, hopeful that we will get a force, at least, you know, no more than a four-story building, um that's not really real yet. So that's what's important to remember. And like I said, if any questions about the nuances or the, or anything, it's really, Veronica can help. I mean, I'm certainly here to answer questions, but Veronica's the, the, the one that, it's in her sense, it's track. She and Daryl are working on it, so. Okay, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Thank you. Diane's been real helpful with that, so thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to Communication Committee. Nick Arzen.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Uh the Communication Committee continues to work on a new neighbor welcome pack. This is gonna be an informational pack um provided to those newly moving into Altadena to enable them to access information and help them navigate their new town. Um these welcome packs will have an emphasis on the town council, our purpose, how we function, how to access us. Um current residents will also have access to these packs in digital form. We're also standing by to assist our new chair in creating the upcoming retreat, as mentioned earlier. The main goal of the Communication Committee has always been to address issues of council communication internally and externally, and after meeting with over seventy residents over the past year to discuss their desires for what they would like the town council to um ta- pay attention to, um something that came up over and over again was the idea of a yearly council retreat to be sure that council members are interacting in a productive and collaborative way. And that's certainly not a new idea, as many of my uh council member friends here know it has happened in the past. Um there were many other requests, uh but those suggestions uh most seem to be best discussed at a sort of retreat or summit. So I'm thrilled that it became obvious a retreat would be a great first step for the committee to focus on, and luckily with COVID restrictions lifting, Chair Jo- I hope I didn't jinx it. Chair Jones is eager to do this a- again, and has scheduled one for March thirteenth. So I'm hoping my fellow council members are able to join us as we gather to discuss ways to build upon current effective council workings and continue to evolve, looking for new ways to help serve our community. We'll also uh give newer members like myself an opportunity to hear about the subtle and not-so-subtle differences and how the council worked prior to the pandemic. Um we're, we're in an odd situation where we've been isolated, but I know the, the council- We're we're in an odd situation where we've been isolated, but I know the the council's been much more active and interacting when this pandemic wasn't happening. And finally, this retreat Chair Jones has called for. It's a great opportunity for the council to emerge from the pandemic stronger and show that we are committed to working together and doing what's best for our Altadena. Thank you, Chair Jones.
Thank you.
I have a question or comment. Nick, it would be good if you, I don't, I don't have a list of what you're including in your welcome package, but. Make sure, don't forget chamber.
Yes.
Yeah, right. We we need to remember chamber. And and I'm sure you're going to put in the different things that the, you know, Sheriff's Station can help with and all that kind of stuff. But I just wanted, I didn't hear you mention chamber, and I just wanted to make sure that was in there.
Thank you for mentioning that because I will be reaching out to council members like yourself. Asking for what current lists you have that you find that you found are helpful. But yeah, Chambers definitely on our list, actually. Council Member O'Malley is is reaching out to them.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Dr. Thomas, did you say something?
No, I said, thank you, Diane.
Yeah, okay, all right. We're going to move on, but I see Ann Hickonbottom from Chris Holden's office, Assembly Member Chris Holden's office here. Did she just disappear?
No, I'm trying to. I'm try, oh, here I am.
Okay.
Hi.
But it was halfway through.
No, no, no problem. Thank you very much. Just happy to be here. I appreciate the condolences that were expressed. By the council for the passing of my mom. Sorry, I couldn't be there at that meeting, but as you can imagine, she had just passed that December fourteenth. And so we were still challenged, but 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 very much appreciated. Thank you so much. From Assembly Member Holden's perspective, as you know, he was recently designated the new Chair of the Appropriations Committee. In the assembly, which is a very important role. And his workload and our workload has has increased. But he very much, you know, stays in stays in contact with. With 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 the with his communities. This week, as of Friday, is the last day that new bills can be submitted. So at the next meeting, I'll be able to give you a report on his legislative package that that's that will be in operation at that time. You know, he has social justice issues. I'm still trying to keep up with the Lincoln and Figaroa. As you pointed out, there is, there are plans under review. I did get an email last week from the planner, from the planner who was handling it. Becky, I think it's Becky Cho. And I guess you probably know Veronica, she's moved on. So she introduced me to the new planner and hopefully they will be able to, you know, to keep us posted on what's going on there. Finally, with the redistricting. Obviously, the Assembly Member still has Altadena Pasadena, but he's picked up Lock and Yada Flint Ridge. So there'll be a new part of eighty forty one. And he no longer has South Pasadena. Now they've gone into another district, so he's moved a little bit further west, but other than that, there's there's no significant changes. By going to Lock and Yada Flint Ridge, he officially picks up J P L. Which many of you know is actually in Lock and Yada Flint Ridge, even though it's operated by Caltech, which is in Pasadena. So as always. Our doors are open. For your 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 calls. We're physically not taking meetings in the office yet. That's a month by month thing. I can attend any events or outside the office that are outdoors. We have to continue to be masked. And I think now we're through the like, the last update we got from our H R rules. Is we're still on our covid program through March. As part of that, both the Assembly staff and Senate staff, we have to test twice a week for covid. They give us the, we have, they give us the test kits. I test every Monday morning. And every Thursday morning before I go into the office. So I'm happy to report so far I'm covid free. And, you know, we're looking to to have some of those restrictions. Relaxed, but I'm actually very pleased with the requirement to tech, to to test every week, twice a week. That makes me comfortable when I'm around my colleagues. It makes me comfortable when I'm around the community. But please call us anytime if you have questions. The run, you all know how to, you can email me directly. You can also go into our website. There's a, there's a component in there where you can put your question in into into a form. We pull those every day. So so they don't disappear into a rabbit hole. So as you're talking to your other constituents, and I don't know, you might want to add that to your your welcome package. To new people and letting them know who the representatives are, et cetera. So thank you. Thank you.
And I have a quick question, and this is probably really stupid. But, I mean, I I think A B and A B means Assembly Bill and S B means sent bill, right? Okay, so A B thirteen forty six just went into effect, and you're, I don't need you to know the number. That's the one about the electric gardening tools.
Okay.
Yeah, that just went, that they're that they're in the process of before twenty four, twenty twenty four. To stop the the usage of gas driven. Gardening equipment. But and and that came up at another meeting I was in for Altadena today. And I guess my question is, I sort of, I sort of laughed and said, well, we should ask Chris because he can explain it to us. And somebody said, well, maybe that's a good idea. So I'm just wondering, it's very confusing. It's confusing about what's happening now, what's happening later, what's being phased in, what's being phased in by twenty twenty four. What's not being really phased in because it's kind of written well, it's too expensive, you don't have to do it. Is there somebody in your office that we that I could talk to? To because everybody here I know is has been really anxious to have, you know, to reduce the. I know they want, they want to reduce air blowers altogether, but to reduce the gas emissions. And so we're sort of excited to hear about it, but it's kind of confusing.
Let me get some information for you.
I'm sorry.
Sure. Yeah, you, yes, you can send me an email, but also you just you just notify me right now so I can also look into it. But if you send me an email, that's great.
Okay, yeah, just to see if there's somebody that can help us explain it to the people in Altadena. That'd be very helpful.
Sure, not a problem. Happy to do it.
And thank you, Chris Holden. He voted for it, I'm thinking. So, okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for attending.
Well, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. Thank you, Veronica.
All right, we're going to move right along here and we're going to have, do we have any general public comment, Dorothy? Wong, did we get any public comment?
We did not receive any official public comments. I don't know if I can speak quickly about. A couple of community concerns. She's saying no.
Very, very quickly.
Well, just quickly, I have been receiving some concerns about filming going on. So I'm just putting that out there in terms of long term filming and lack of. Of getting notice. And then the other one, we had a deceased bear, a young bear that was found dead at Loma Alta Park. And there was just disconnect on communication between California Fish and Wildlife. Getting the information and Pasadena Humane Society. So that's something I think we have to work on in our community. California Fish and Wildlife did recommend us to look into a wildlife watch program. Which will then connect the different agencies and Pasadena actually has a wildlife watch plan. And so the California Fish and Wildlife actually supports the communities, the agencies to kind of develop a plan. So anyway, that's the second bear. This one ended up at the morgue at Pasadena Humane. And then California Fish and Wildlife biologists went down there, but they didn't have funding or capacity to do any sort of. You know, necropsy or whatever you call it to determine the cause of death. And the biologist. I don't know if it's guessed, but made a determination that it was struck by a vehicle. So anyway, those are loud noises that we need to try and wrap our heads around. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, and we'll have to find a place for those things on the agenda. Thank you. Okay, all right, we're moving along here. We're at eight forty three and we're on number nine, and who knows what that is? Okay, adjournment. Can somebody make that motion and second it?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay, we're officially adjourned at eight forty three.
Good job, everyone.
Thank you. All right, thank you. It was a good meeting, I think. Thank you.